Everyone else said? Start with the pledge. The flag of the United States of America is good Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trust me, Trumway. Trust me, you can touch it. Here, trust me, Trumway.
Here.
Trust me, here.
She will be here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes, January thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, regular board meeting?
Can we move?
Have a second?
Second.
Any additions, subtractions, deletions? Will we be seeing Mr. Prescott today, or?
No, I'm just gonna mention that he can't come tonight. He's a band concert.
Sure. There's no changes. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approvals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any dissension? Motion passes. Motion to approve the special board meeting, January twenty first.
Can we move?
Have a second. Any changes here? There's no discussion. All those in favor of approvals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any dissension? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by Robert Wiedner from Novatech to give us a presentation on a new computer system that is sorely, sorely, sorely needed in this village to bring us into two thousand fourteen. We have a lot of things that we're going to make some adjustments on the computer system. And right now, the one that we have is probably less efficient than most of our home computers that we have in our homes. And there's probably less backup being done in this village. Cannot have, no backup being done for our records. He was, we had him come in, give an estimate, and copied with the estimate. I looked around. I looked around at other possibilities, other choices perhaps of suppliers. Found very little. Novatech is highly recommended from the town, by the town, by the village of Russell's Point, by the fire department. They have the IT. We can do it either over the phone, or if necessary, the IT person will be here within an hour or so. I think he's had money to.
Yes.
As of date, I mean, the computer system here is wholly inadequate. Going to be adding the inventory system. We approved EJ Prescott as a supplier. They want to bring the inventory software in and load it on the computer, on Mike's computer. We really need something with the power and the storage and the capabilities to accept this new program. And once the water program gets on its feet, moving forward here a little bit quicker, I believe, April will be a, April is your time, Mike? When will grants announced?
Tentatively, I guess. I mean, it could be any time, but you figures in April.
Well, when that grant is awarded, then things start to move forward, there's going to be a lot of material that's loaded on the village's computer or computer system because we will be wholly in charge of all of the billing, all of the metering, and everything to do with the operation and maintenance of the entire water service between the village and the town. We need that extra oomph, if you will, with the computer system. We had asked him to come up. He broke down on the side of the north way. He will not be here tonight. I can call him tomorrow, but I would very much like the board to consider looking very seriously at this, at this new computer system. I know the price is fourteen thousand seven dollars. Amy?
Amy. Sorry, excuse me.
You know the cost of new computer systems today. I just purchased one for my wife. It cost me about twenty-three hundred dollars. And looking at what is being offered here for us, we're looking at four workstations plus another computer to run the, to run the, what do we call the thing in the back?
Server?
The server, thank you. Not very computer literate, sorry. But this is, this is equipment that's sorely needed here in this village. We've talked about it, I think, in the past, how inadequate this system is, the tech support, how necessary that is here. Really, I think we all agree that this is something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Would you like a motion on this tonight?
If, if we're happy with this, I think the cost is reasonable. Looking at, I went down and looked at the town system. The town is very happy. I talked to Jane about it. She's very happy with the services and the computer systems that were brought in with the Wi-Fi that was set up. One of the things that Christine McFedrich would like is the, is the Wi-Fi to cut down on paperwork. If you look at, I know we're not gonna save fourteen thousand dollars in paper, but it should be significant as we go through with this. State of Vermont bought, bought those tablets for all of their legislators, and they were spending somewhere in the area of, it cost them a million dollars to pay for all of these tablets for the legislators, and they saved a million dollars, at least according to the news report, saved a million dollars in paper costs in one year. They paid for themselves.
Yeah, with printing and all.
With printing and all of the other stuff, technicians and stuff like that included. So it really was, I think, a significant savings. And again, as we see that the computer systems here, they're extremely inadequate to face our needs. I'm very, I'm very concerned about not having, I mean, most of our material backup. If there was ever a catastrophic occurrence in this building, we would be hard pressed to replace some of these things. So, anyone have any concerns here, anything you noticed, anything you see?
No, I don't see anything in this. From our last discussion, was there a service fee that went with this involved?
What this, where is it on this? It's on, it's on page two. Under labor. The last, I guess the last sentence. This line is for estimate purposes only. Actual time will be billed upon job completion, reducing price from ninety-five dollars an hour to eighty dollars an hour and converting to bank of hours per contracted client. They put them in, the labor cost is eighty dollars an hour. We buy a bank of time ahead so that, so that we have that, we have that option awaiting us. Their time starts from the time they step in the door until the time they leave. Not when they leave Plattsburgh, but when they step into our door.
So, is this line, I didn't, this thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Could change.
That is the labor for setting up, and that's not a firm figure there.
Correct. But is that, is that intended as if there was extra to go towards that bank?
Yes. Yes, whatever's extra there, it will be reduced, it will be stored in the bank, and then our labor cost will be eighty dollars an hour.
Does that carry over from year to year if you don't use your bank?
Yes.
And is there a number on that?
Nothing on it.
No, he just says when it kind of, yeah, when it kind of dips down, then you add money into it.
So what would the board's desire be here?
I make a motion that we purchase this computer system at the cost of fourteen thousand seven dollars and fifty-two cents from Novatech in Morrisonville, New York. It is, in my perception, an excellent investment, like you said, Mayor Martin, if we ever had something happen in here, we have lost so much information that if things aren't being backed up, there's no way to retrieve it.
The stuff that's on the computers in there now is, you replace them, I think. There's years of stuff on here.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any other discussion on this?
Well, we need more quotes. There's no way, and I want more information than this kind of a volume of a purchase.
Great. Well, looking at, can you find me some quotable companies here? I looked in the full book there and see.
Make a next one.
You want to table this, can I change your motion to table this for the day? Until next month?
Okay. I make a motion that we table the purchase of the four computers from Novatech until our March meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Is everyone on agreement?
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask some discussion when it goes to courts.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask if we, if we'd like to see if we have a court besides this one.
I looked around in the, in the yellow pages and a couple calls, and I didn't find anyone that would offer us the service information.
Why don't we call some of the other municipalities beyond our little ones right here and see what they're using? Maybe they're using something else. You know, some of the other ones that.
We were going with the town and the village.
Right, right.
We can call and see.
Shazie uses a, a one-person company to maintain their stuff, similar to what you have before.
Some local, some local.
Yeah, if he works for the phone company, he has some knowledge. He does the work for Shazie. I don't know what they have anymore.
We call it, right? You do that tomorrow, won't you?
Uh huh.
All in approval, waiting?
Aye.
Any dissension? Motion passes.
Would Novatech be able to come up again, like maybe one of our, our budget meetings?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna call him tomorrow. I'd like to schedule over here, I'd like to schedule a budget meeting for the twenty-fourth, if that's okay with everyone but Jane.
You know I won't be.
I will not be here.
You will not be here. We pick another date?
I have a board of directors meeting.
When must we have the budget, March?
No more. Well, that gives us some time.
March?
Yeah.
When's our meeting?
March.
Is March third a good date?
I won't be back, but if I'm the only one, that's fine. I come back on the sixth.
Oh, yeah, now, we're at the tenth. There's nothing before the third. Are you the only one good on Monday night?
Yeah.
Well, don't do it around me, that's fine. If, if the third works for people, that's fine.
I was gonna say, if the twenty-fourth works for other people, I just, I'm, I have an obligation on my job that evening.
And I'm, I'm having none too. Those, those two of us. This is March, so the third works.
The seventeenth is next week.
Seventeenth, I'll be out of town.
And the twenty-fourth?
And the twenty-fourth, Monday night seems to work best for everybody, but I believe by the middle of March, we have to have a preliminary budget in the controller's office.
Is everybody good, but you on the twenty-fourth?
No, I won't be on the twenty-fourth.
You won't be here either.
But I won't be here on the third, but everyone else will be, so maybe you should go for the third.
I have most of the, once we get the figures for the personnel expenses and things like that, insurance and retirement numbers and stuff like that, we'll pretty much have a preliminary budget for your approval, ready to go. And if you can add the finer points of whatever you want, and we've done that in the past, we just would like some input from the board.
Well, if you wanna do a preliminary one with three of us, and then schedule the third, well, you're not here the third, but.
That's all right.
So do the twenty-fourth and the third, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, if you want some input.
Yes. Let's call the twenty-third.
Twenty-fourth.
Or twenty-fourth, excuse me.
And the third as well?
We can schedule it.
So I'm gonna miss both those books. But I'm gonna come in during the meeting to try to understand how you're doing.
Start this week, so we're gonna start looking over the preliminary issues this week, Wednesday.
What time is it?
Five thirty, six, whatever you want.
Five thirty, it's fine.
Five thirty, sir.
Okay. So we'll, we'll get together February twenty-fourth at five thirty. We'll have to put that notice in the paper. Public will be welcome. And March, March third, five thirty? Okay. Propose to the public.
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Same time on March third.
Very good, thank you. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
In looking through the minutes and listening to the prior board meetings, property at twenty-nine Cedar Street, what's that costing us? And what are the long-range costs, what are the projected costs for that? Litigation, engineers, demolition?
Well, hopefully, the homeowner will take care of it. It's up to him, it's his cause. What is costing us now? Our lawyer, who has, who has worked on some of the paperwork, is under, is under a salary with the village. So it's not costing the village anything for legalities at this point, or even down the road.
So what about the taking, removing the structure?
Removing the structure is the homeowner's responsibility, until we have to go to court if we have to take that route, much like we ended up with Babylon Building, where the owner walked away. But that was, that was more of a time-sensitive issue, where the building was collapsing at that point. We have to go through the process, survey. We'll have to go through the survey process once again.
Now, does the county reimburse the village for all these expenses?
Eventually, after, after eighteen months, after eighteen months or so, yes. It's spread out over the whole cost of the, over the whole tax being base of the county. That's what happened with the Babylon Building. We were reimbursed with the demolition and removal cost, except for landscaping. The county reimbursed us about eighteen months later.
'Cause I see the next one on the list is the, the old village hall.
Yes.
That's been abandoned by, it's going into tax foreclosure or tax auction?
It's been up for sale. Mike and I made a visual examination of the building. It is in definite need of attention. That one will be more, that one's going to be much more expensive than the Babylon Building and Recomy.
And the village will assume the cost for that again?
Not unless we can get Mr. Bayett, the owner, to agree to fix it up or take it down.
How many other buildings are we looking at like this?
At the present, those two. And we'll move on to the others as necessary. It's the homeowner's responsibility here.
The, the property owner?
Yes. And is that building up for auction?
The, the old town hall?
Yes.
My understanding is gonna be listed in the tax sale.
Okay, so he hasn't paid his taxes in a number of years. And hopefully, whoever the new owner, whomever that may be, will take some responsibility. It's still being used, as far as I know.
This isn't unique to the village of Champlain.
Oh, no, I understand that.
This is, this is a problem from the state. There's many, many old buildings.
We still have that drop box out in front, and with Mike and I went down, did her, did her inspection, did her visual, I peeked inside that drop box. And it was still.
Once the county takes possession of that, though, they no longer have access to that building.
Yeah.
Or that drop box, you know?
There was still that, it had to be, had to be shipped out or handled or whatever. And as far as I know, the assistant still comes down once or twice a week here, does whatever business that company has to do. I think it just serves as a nail drop, it just serves as an address here in the village.
And it's a Canadian order?
Yes. He's the same gentleman we dealt with when we wanted to move that stone with a plaque down to the village park.
What on the question regarding village water main breaks?
Yes.
What's the protocol? 'Cause I know this particular place is a repeat occurrence, if not once or twice a year.
We've had, as far as I know, three, three main breaks down there over the last couple of years.
But is it, what's breaking? Is it our village water main breaking? Or is it the entrance pipe to the Kimpek's building?
Wasn't the line, it wasn't the building, it was the six-inch mine that runs.
Parallel to the building.
But just as if it's a reoccurring problem, we seem to be band-aiding it. I mean, obviously, it breaks at the most inopportune times of the year, but are we forecasting to?
We're looking at, we're trying to find the information, the maps and things like that about those, those water lines. See what we can do with that.
But how does that affect us as far as contamination?
In that case, not.
Didn't affect you at all in contamination, because it was full pressure going through there. We dug it and fixed it under pressure. If we had to, we could valve it off on the corner by your street. That line just feeds that building. There's a line that comes up across, and there's, they've got lines that feed that building off of that.
Okay, thank you.
The water, or the, the health department was in contact, and as long as we do it under pressure, the pump contaminates, they get into the system. And they are, you know, we make note of it on our water reports because of the loss of water. But the health department is, they're satisfied that we handle these water main breaks professionally, and we're not causing any harm to the system or to our residents.
Thank you.
We have built into our, our budget some additional funds in preparation for problems, homes, not that it's gonna cover everything, but so it doesn't become a burden immediately upon us, so.
Still function very well.
Right.
Sure, it's in our business. Okay, anything else? Report from the codes officer, please.
Well, you have my report. Basically, it's winter time, things are pretty slow, other than a little bit of work, a few letters I, I sent out, and what kind of Cedar Street project, basically nothing new, nothing new or to report anyway.
In the correspondence, Mike, have you got a response from, from Elvest Development about this electric publisher?
Yeah, I called her last week. She was under the impression that it was up to me to call the electrical inspector, and I explained to her that it's not, it's their responsibility to give me the electrical inspection. And she was supposed to be doing that last week, and I haven't gotten it yet, so I'm gonna wait about one more week and.
Could we call on Wednesday?
Yeah.
See if we can get that as a. Any questions for Mike? How's your report? Were we informed that the closing of the village, the closing of the Dollar's store?
No, they never really made an announcement that they were, I mean, there's a sale on the store now. I just found this out, when I went to check to see what was going on in another part of the mall, I was informed that they were going to be leaving, and I see they're having a sale, so.
Some signs, I don't know.
Yeah. Apparently, the guy is closing. He has twelve or eighteen of these stores throughout the northeast, he's closing all of them. It's not just this one. But on the flip side, the Dollar General is covering where Direct Subs is, they make a lot there.
Oh, really?
Received some information today from them at the town, so, I mean, it's not the village, but it'll, it'll help.
Gonna start in the spring?
Um, it's, from what I gather, their intention is to start in the spring.
You mean that grassy area? Where they fill it in? Goes under water over here?
Well, it's always filled in now.
Yeah, there's a few issues they have to work through there yet, but they sent their subdivision and their special use, you know, get started with zoning and playing them on, so. I hadn't heard anything in quite a while, and all of a sudden, last week, they wanted to know when they had to have their stuff in, and I got it today, so that's surprising.
Probably hearing the closing of the other Dollar Stores is striking now.
Well, they've been working on it since last summer, but.
They've been opening up all.
Yeah.
No, I know.
And they go up fast, when that starts construction, it'll be.
Well, they wanna put one up in Shazie, so.
Can I help them?
Yeah, yeah, there's one there now.
Well, they put one where the old Lavins candy was in Plattsburgh, and it was, I blinked one day, the Lavins was gone in the, I was like, what?
It was like a less than month, it was up. Well, it's a, I don't, I'll replace that loss.
We need a motion to go out of the regular meeting.
Make motion.
Second. Do you have a motion to go into the public hearing for local law number one, two thousand fourteen? Have a second?
Second.
This is the public hearing for the adoption and passage of local law number one of two thousand fourteen, the best value. This has already been passed by the town of Champlain and the village of Russell's Point. We will continue to do our business with the bidding process. This just gives us another option in terms of purchasing the best value, very often is one that the village will need to expedite or to get a better, to get a better deal on a bid at process or a bid at commodity. Very often, what you find is, is the lowest bidder may not actually be the best in terms of what the village is looking for. One example is buying a vehicle, getting a lower, getting a, getting a bid from a local dealer and a, and a bid from a dealer that is out of state with a fifty-six dollar difference. And because of the way the bidding was set up, they had to go with the one in Vermont rather than the local dealer, which I believe in the long run is detrimental to the whole process. When you're using out on the local dealer number two, it's gonna cost you money to have the, have the maintenance, regular maintenance down and things like that, even though the regular dealer will, the local dealer will do it under duress. It's not setting up a very good.
It's not supporting local business.
Okay? We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion here? It follows the same guidelines. Twenty thousand for village contracts, thirty-five thousand for expenditures.
We don't have first and second, we have a first and second to the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Oh, it's true. Public hearing, it's not a public hearing. Okay, we need a motion to either approve or disapprove of this local law.
We need a motion to approve the local law number one.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? For the whole call, please.
Justice Tremblay, Justice Frederick, hi. Justice Tremblay.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Garrett Mern.
Aye. Any other discussion on local law number one? Need a motion to go out of the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we oppose. Need a motion to go back to the regular meeting?
So...
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, motion carries? It's going to be an expensive meeting, let's see if they can... Okay, good morning, report. I'll try to do it quick and painless. Good evening, I'm very pleased to see that many village residents are using this skating rink. The village DPW has done a great job under some adverse weather conditions to make the rink usable. And we are glad that village residents, young and old, are using it or are using this new recreational area. More improvements to the playground area will begin this spring with more equipment installed, some fencing put around the skating basketball area, and other improvements to make the area more attractive and user-friendly. Now, the downside. Unpaid water, wastewater bills for the last quarter are now past due. Shut-off notices and warning letters will be going out soon regarding those delinquent bills with service termination to soon follow. This is a continuous problem. Every quarter, we spend hours calling end-users and reminding them that their bills must be paid and giving users every opportunity to settle their outstanding bills. Water is an essential substance that must be paid for by the users or by the village. The village cannot sustain this water, wastewater costs, which are significant without the bills being paid. A majority of our users pay their bills on time and we thank you for those that do this. Like all bills we receive on a regular basis, that must be paid within a specific timeframe, our cellphone bill, our electric bill, our internet bill, loans of all types, there must be, these must be addressed on time or that service is terminated. Termination of water, wastewater service is not a desirable situation for the users or for the village, but it is a reality. So please, pay attention to this necessary condition. Last Friday, the village experienced its first wintertime water main break on Elm Street. We experienced some significant equipment failure while addressing this break. And through shared services with the village of Rousas Point, we were able to repair this break quickly and effectively. We would like to express our appreciation to Rousas, to the Rousas Point DPW, especially Mr. Brian Pelkey, who wholeheartedly offered us any assistance that we needed at that time. We needed to repair, we needed to repair the ruptured water line. Water, loss means money. When our backhoe broke down on the job, Rousas Point quickly had their backhoe and an operator on-site to help with the repair. We were able to repair the break while under pressure. There was no need to issue a boil water order and service was quickly resumed. Again, we would like to thank the village of Rousas Point, Brian Pelkey, and the operator, Adam Menard, who gave up part of this Friday evening to help us out in our time of need. It was cold and their help was greatly appreciated. It is my concern that the board needs to address this equipment breakdown and this situation and address the replacement of a very necessary piece of village inventory as soon as practical. Water main breaks will continue to occur, snow and ice removal will continue, and road and sidewalk repair is a continuous issue. I believe that this board would be very productive to address this need as soon as possible to maintain our excellent response to problems within the village. I thought it was going to be expensive. That's my report. Justice Tremblay.
Okay. Well, I echo what you said, Mr. Martin, about the ice rink. I was coming home from church one Saturday evening and there were a group of young people out on the ice with their shovels. We'd had a light dusting of snow. They were shoveling it off and preparing to skate. There was a bunch of them down there and they looked like they were having a wonderful time. It truly is nice to see an area that is going to get a lot of use and I think once all that equipment is in, I think it'll be a wonderful gathering spot for people in the village with the garden nearby and just turning it into a very nice green space that people can enjoy while their kids play. So kudos again to Mike and his crew for everything that they do to help keep the improvements in the village. You make us proud. And also, thank you to Rousas Point because without their quick response and their sharing of time, talent, and equipment, Friday night could have been a lot worse.
Yes, it could have. And I, if I could add to that, I don't think that we can reasonably expect that Rousas Point is going to answer all of those needs.
Well, there will be a time where they're going to, you know, their equipment's going to be in use. They may have a water main break and are just unable to assist us.
Sure. Mike's going to have some things to say about this and, just a point from my observation, what we did in two hours, Rousas Point machine would be able to do in about 30 minutes. And it's just, it's just amazing the difference in the ability of that machine, which is when after hours broke, when I watched it, you know, it was all broke.
Well, and that, that just brings up another thing, too, is as this village is moving forward with hopefully grant money coming in and a new water project on the horizon, that if we're going to maintain and, and keep this village moving forward and keep our customers well taken care of, we need to keep up on equipment and we need to be staying on top of it. And this is, this is just a perfect example of how quickly you can shut down.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Justice Frederick?
I have some updates on some of the projects that have, we've started. First of all, Andrew Visconti could not come tonight as our youth liaison, he has up and concert. But he did want all of you to know that everyone's talking about the ice rink and how much they love it, so that's great. I had another young man, Kyle Seibert, who lives in the village and he would, he wanted to know if he could give a disc golf introductory type lesson when the weather gets good. We can promote that and have a bunch of people go down and get some of the discs.
We'll schedule, in the spring, we'll schedule a grand opening for the disc golf course.
He's been playing all the time. He's been playing all winter.
Yeah, I see him down here in the snow. I think he's on the league, too, they travel to different places.
Yeah, yeah. So he would like to, he would like to do some kind of introductory thing and then maybe have a little competition type thing, I don't know, something like that.
There's a couple of holes we have to move. On the first hole, we need to move it to the right maybe 50 feet.
It's too close to the river, isn't it?
Too close to the river. And then the one, the final hole, hole number nine, is going to have to be relocated because I think we all agree that we'd like to put a soccer field down there, a light field down there for them to, you know, to practice and things like that.
I also met last week with Nikki Malinsky, who lives on Prospect. She's a mother and also a daycare provider, I think. But she wondered if the village would be interested in having a series of activities for children. Crafts and education, no cost, do donations, have it like once a month. Becky Harvey is willing or interested in hosting it at time after time reception. And I just need to know if the board is supportive of the idea. Can I work with Nikki on going ahead with something in the late spring and then could we politicize it? Similar to what Donna Baumell does at the Rousas Point library is what I would say, is what Nikki's looking for. And our library doesn't have too many activities, so she wondered if maybe through the village we could do something. What do you want me to tell her?
They give us a space free?
Becky sounded very interested in working with us.
There would be no cost to the village. There'd be no liability.
Right, right. I told Nikki we had no money for this, but we both thought we could work with the people in the village and probably get the supplies and put that at a cost to the village. She came, she came with probably 35 ideas. She was amazing, absolutely amazing with her ideas. From studying worms, I guess Cornell does something where they bring a bunch of worms. I know, it's all sorts of...
You can bring those speakers from outside.
Planting seeds. She thought of planting seeds and then maybe we could have a plot at the community garden just for children and they could plant theirs and they could see their, their plants growing or one or two. We have plenty of plots last year available.
Kenny's Drugs is a very big supporter of community activities.
So we could work with them. I told Nikki, she, she wanted to come tonight, but her son had, I think, a basketball game, so she couldn't come. But I told her I would give the action to her.
Her son is old enough to be in basketball now?
I know he's basketball.
I think it's wonderful that we have a village resident who's willing to give their time and talents to get involved with the youth and, and create a nice Saturday morning program at one time after...
Education.
Yes, education. I think that the idea of the garden plot is wonderful.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Kids, you know, love to watch things grow and I think it'd be a part of it and see it from start to finish, that's wonderful.
All right. So I'll tell them that we're supportive of the villages. Okay, an update on the farmer's market, this has been very popular, the idea is very popular. I contacted the health department, we're fine, as long as we're not selling cooked food down there, we're not making food, cooking food. I contacted the New York State Department of Agriculture and he said we're good to go. He said, "Go and be successful." It was very, very supportive. So the next thing we need to do is we need to find some vendors, some farmers. So I need ideas on how we should do that. I mean, we'll put it in the press a little...
You can put it on the website, on a Facebook page, you know, local venues, local farmers, push the seller's produce.
I think we should do that right away, just to get it out and then maybe do it again soon. Rousas Point is going to have one on Fridays, but I want ours to be on Saturday mornings.
Great. And we could, we could get the press to do an article, just give an update on the playground where we stand, you know, give them, get some pictures of the golf course and the ice rink. As I said, as, as we progress, keep them in, in the loop. So we can say in there that now we're looking to adding a farmer's market down there and we are looking for vendors, so...
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Cooperative Extension through Cornell has already developed a program which may be to your use, it's called Adirondack Harvest. They've got a, a whole directory of producers for vegetables, meat products, flowers.
I've read, I have read of that, that website extensively and...
And the people on it, to include myself, it's a marketing avenue and you would just be another outlet. And they're looking for persons or groups such as this to, to add on.
There was a contact name, do you remember that name? I'll look, I'll look at it again.
Not offhand, no.
Did read, I did look at that website.
But they've just started at what they call a tri-county. Franklin, I believe Essex, and Clinton. So now you've got a three-county base of vendors who are willing to travel and supply.
Okay. I know that the Plattsburgh Farmer's Market is on Saturday mornings, but we're not in competition with them. We're going to be very small. It'll be people right around here who don't go to Plattsburgh to that, so I don't think it would be an issue. I mean, the big vendors aren't going to come up to Champlain, I understand that.
Yeah, we probably could check with Enel Burke, too, some of the farmers over there that might be wanting to come over. That's where Rousas Point pulls from.
Well, you've also got the, the farmers that set up on Route 11, whereas if you've got them into more of a farmer's market situation, it's much safer for people, for them, as well as people want.
Those potatoes.
That's a key spot, man.
Are they from alone? Are those people, those potato people are alone?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, they are? Oh, they do?
But it's not very, it's not very safe on 11 stopping.
All right.
Yes.
I know Dragoons sell corn out of the rec center park a lot.
But if they had a venue in, in Champlain, too...
Yeah, they'd probably get involved.
And the Rapids Road, that they do the berries and they do corn.
On South.
Yeah, if you go, I think that's called Rapids Road.
Straight, South Street goes straight?
Yeah.
Yeah, like past, by the gate, past the gate.
That used to be Gadways Farm, but he's not there anymore. But I guess the people that are there still do it.
Yeah.
McDonald.
And they have berries, too. I don't know if they still do the berries.
Oh, yeah?
Okay, those are good ideas. All right, so I'll follow up on those. Oh, and then the last thing is that the next talk, I think you all got the pink sheet of paper, but the next lecture in our cultural series is Andrew Black and Marnie Timmel talking about their excavation in Coopersville and what they found out about, well, he titled it "Lifelong, the Great Jay-Z: Early Immigrants to Champlain," and it's all the excavating that they've done at that site. And that's on March 27, 6:30 PM, at the History Center. And the presenter after that will be the end of May, and that's Dr. Colin Reed is going to come talk about job creation. And then I'm thinking, just looking ahead, the next thing will probably be our concert in the park and then we'll be into the fall after our little village gets there. So, okay, I'm done.
You should have more information on the water wastewater project and the whole, one of the major focuses of that is, is economic growth and development and maybe Dr. Reed would like to look at that situation.
Yeah. He wants to come up and meet with us anyway a little bit before that talk to see what, what focus he's, he knows a lot about a lot of different topics, so he wanted some advice.
Interesting letter, he has articles on the paper.
Yeah.
It's limited.
So, yeah, I think that, that's it.
I'm sure...
Sorry, I took too much time.
Justice Tremblay?
Yeah, I got a few things. Again, I got to reiterate the thank you to Rousas Point, that was, that was awesome, that we're able to work together like that. That's great. And it's very appreciated. What I brought here to talk about was I, two weeks ago, went out, got my signatures, spent two days door to door, and as our great mayor said, it's good to get out and meet the people. And it was cold, but it was very useful, very productive. So I thought I'd share a lot of the comments and concerns from the villagers with the board. Nearly everyone I spoke with made comment on the great job our mayor was doing and many, many, many shared, I hope he will stay on for lower terms.
It's the board commitment.
It is the board commitment, but they, they recognize that the amount of time you put in. I just wanted to make that statement and let you know that many people commented on the work you do, so thank you. Then there was also a lot of comment on the work of the village crew and our superintendent and it's, it does not go unnoticed, Mike. They all said, "You guys are doing a great job." They, they see it. So, great job, good work. Some residents, you know, we talked about, they had questions about the garden water project. They discuss that they, you know, the majority, I think, the feeling I was getting there, all in favor of it, they're requesting no rates, what, what to expect. Very excited, all were very excited to hear that the, the water would be softened and the harness issue is being addressed. That is very important to everyone I talked to. What else have I got? The email I'm reading. It was suggested by a resident that it would be useful, I believe that, she probably spoke to you about this, it'd be useful to have distance markers around the block of the village playground area. Apparently, she has found that this is a great place to walk laps because it's a level, the only level place in the, in the village where if you're troubled with hills, it is a great place. So I thought I'd bring that to the board's attention.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah. Some sort of distance marker. Some sort of distance markers would be cool to keep track of. She told me how far it was around there, I think it was, it was a quarter mile or half, I can't remember what she said. Probably a quarter mile is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea, I like that.
So, that's something we could, we could think about. It doesn't have to be expensive, just little signs of some sort. And in regards to the, to the Dollar Store, it's good to hear that Dollar General's coming in, cause a couple of residents asked if there's anything we can do to promote, you know, getting a merchandise store into this area. People still miss aims. And, I do too.
Yeah, I do too.
So I think, I think the Dollar General will fit that bill.
Yeah, but it's gonna leave a void at the mall over here now, because now you're gonna have three empty spots. I know Mr. Parmelo was there, concerned about his trying to find something to go in there. I don't know if he has anything in mind or not, but I'm sure they'd like to keep it full too.
The employees, the employees at the Dollar, at the Yankee Dollar Store said that they had been, I don't know if it was Dollar General or Family Dollar had been in there and did measuring and whether they were planning on realizing that or not.
I mean, I think it wasn't the fact at some point of these, they were expanding its store merchandise.
Yeah. There, there, I mean, here are a lot of different things, but that was one scenario.
But in regards to, to those questions I got from a few of those people, what, man, is there anything we can do? Should we have a conversation with Mr. Parmelo, for example, see if there's anything we can do to help market it? I didn't know where to go with that.
We could call him, but I'm sure his multimillion dollar advertising agency and the way that they do their business would be.
Already looking.
Yeah.
Those days are short, but that was, that was really the gist of the concerns, I just felt like it'd be useful ceremony.
Yeah, thank you, that is interesting.
I figure a post office would be nice.
Yeah, right.
We're lucky to have a post office.
Yes. Talk about, in the whole billions of dollars.
Okay, trustee Garrett.
So I had the same things, it's going around getting signatures. Comment made to me actually today was, "How many mayors do you see out there directing traffic on a cold Friday night because there's a water break?" And a lot of people don't realize that you're there in, in every instance, and, and I, I think that's pretty incredible.
It frees up one of the guys that are doing the job.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure they can handle a flashlight, but I can do it and I can do the shovel work, which I prefer not to do.
I think that'd be a union issue anyways. And, and same thing, so many people are pleased with the change in the village, the excitement about downtown and, you know, the decorating at Christmas, that was brought up. And, you know, that things are happening and, and that is excitement, it's breathing a little bit of life back in. So I, I think that, you know, we do need to move forward. I'll give Shan a call, you know, see about getting another article on the playground and the status and some pictures of kids skating and people are coming from the other communities. I also spoke with a kid today that is junior high, interested in our government, invited him to come to a meeting as well. He said, "Oh, everyone's talking about the playground." I said, "Well, this is your chance to, you know, be ambassador for the kids and bring their ideas to us." And so really, it, it gets people excited that, that things are happening, so kudos. On that line, I finished another grant, the holiday grant for Stewart's, I submitted for that again this year. Last year they gave us a thousand dollars towards the playground, so I asked for triple that for this year. Ask big, go homeless on the right. So we'll continue to, to seek out other opportunities. And I've kind of changed the whole request as opposed to asking for new equipment. We've got some great equipment, but have rewritten the synopsis to be more of, you know, explain that we were given two generous donations from our two local schools that closed and that through renovating it, we're able to become a, a greater community center. I'd also like to look at some grants for building just a roof down there, you know, for cover, so that families that are watching their kids, it's not a permanent structure, the water can run through it, so it meets all those exceptions.
Or.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and so we can have a couple picnic tables there, so especially moms with little babies that have kids that are active, they can be under, out of the sun.
Yeah.
And protecting the kids that way. And if we do get like that mileage marker for the walking, you know, your kids can be playing on our equipment and you're doing laps around your kids and you know what you're doing, which will be really nice. So, and that is it for.
If you call Shan Moore to create some coverage on, you know, the downtown and what we've been doing. Fox forty-four has called twice, wanting information.
Okay.
In fact, they called this morning.
And?
And just wanted information about things that are going on in the village.
Oh, okay.
What we're looking at, what we're trying to do. The guy seemed very receptive. I explained that there was, he asked about the local line number one, and I said, "It really wasn't so much of a change, it just gives us better options."
Right.
But he, I got an email from him, his email address, and he was, he seemed to be very excited about doing some coverage here. So he may be somebody you wanna call.
Okay. What was his name, do you know?
I can get to email for you after.
That's great, yeah.
And also another reporter from Fox a couple of weeks ago called and I sent her back a quick email about the water project and I haven't heard from her since, but he was very, he was very helpful to me.
Well, and it's nice to have a, a positive story coming out of Champlain and instead of the doom and gloom of the closing of our schools, there's nothing for our kids. So, you know, this is kind of exciting to see that, in, in the face of, you know, all the issues that we have faced, that, you know, we're a new flower that's blooming again.
WPTZ shows some interest as well.
Okay. I'll contact all of them.
With David, the weekend anchor.
Sure. Oh, no.
David, he was up here, did an interview with me earlier, but he was receptive to information as well. Thank you, trustees. A report from the first prisoner, please.
Everyone has their South American reports for January. We did have one count that's in the negative, it's the insurance for the general fund, it was very minimal. I'll wait till next month to do the transfer. Due to the insurance cost.
Any questions?
I had one. Hold on. Just one.
Okay.
I think that's, I think I think about one. I had a question for you, Mike, on, I was looking at the sample lumber. Were these items that we couldn't get locally here that we went out to samples? I mean, I have no problem supporting them, I just.
Two bodies, pressure treatment bodies.
There was wood, roof boot, caulking.
Yeah, the lumber.
Caulking gun.
Actually, at Price's Round, they were cheaper.
Plywood.
Even cheaper than Lowe's and that, like, we were gonna get, if we happen to have them back, they may be cheaper today.
Okay.
Roof boot, we needed.
Well, there were little tiny purchases, so was it worth the gas? That was my question, in time of employees.
Well, they deliver it, they don't charge us, when they come through, they deliver it.
Okay.
So we got, we got stuff, you know, when they come through here a couple times a week, two, three times a week, so they just deliver as they come.
Oh, that's nice, okay.
You know, the thing I did have to go forward with the roof boot, that's the only one we're doing, the chimneys, and we got crushed with the ice, had to fix the, do that. But it would be that, and one of them was ripped, and I have a chimney boot.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
The garage, a question on the nice egg, was that high for the garage, E sixty-eight? I don't recall our garage being that high before, so I'm just curious if there was something that went on.
We, we don't, is it one?
Uh, page two, midway, E sixty-eight, three twenty-two. It just, it jumped out at me as that being higher than my recollection, so.
It is actually two forty-nine ninety-seven was electricity and six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents was natural gas. That's December and January.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right, I'm not losing my mind, but thank you, okay.
We keep the heat down too, very quickly.
Yeah, I don't know, it's pretty warm here, see how red my face is? I'm used to fifty-eight in my house, so this is like heaven.
Thinking about layers.
How to take off the layer, frightening, oh my gosh.
Fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I still have oil in my house. My pellet stove heats it nicely, but I have to keep the upstairs pipes from freezing, so we keep it at fifty-eight.
All right, any motion to approve the warrant?
We do have some invoices, three to add.
Give us a thing on that. Yeah, it's there.
Three invoices, we did get our last delivery of salt, which brought us right to our.
To the end?
To the end. But anyway, but it gives us enough to last us to this year. So we have three invo, uh, three invoices to add for total seventeen fifty-one thirty-six. Make motion to accept the warrant with the addition of these three invoices totaling seventeen fifty-one thirty-six.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant?
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Bedrich?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Another report from the superintendent?
Yeah, just saying, I'm particularly busy. We did some replanting of the water plant, replant the chlorine room, and it's been repainted, trying to clean things up in there, got rid of this little ductwork and stuff that was mounted there that is no longer used, so we took care of that. We are gonna do the same thing on the distribution side, once we get time, we'll slowly paint things and get new spruce up in there as well. The ice rink is in operation, which you mentioned, and I'm glad to see that it's being used. Being used is a, to see it used is a, it's not so much a failure, it makes me feel that, you know, we put that effort for, towards it. I'm glad to see people using it. We installed a new jack on our sidewalk machine, our sidewalk machine, our sewer generator. There was a, a jack on there that wasn't heavy enough, and I was afraid it was gonna fall and somebody would get hurt. So we did install a new jack, we rewired, we needed to be wired to fix the lights, so the lights will work on it. We installed some new signs, some little chomping signs, we had gotten a request if we could put some on prospect, and we, we went ahead and did that. Those are up. A new sign at the playground, we put up in the playground, skating area. Christmas decorations are taken down, put away for next year. They do, well, it's not, don't even go zero. I wanna thank Carl Smith too for, he lets use his bucket truck for that, so that we don't have to have a phone company coming in the same time, so that was nice of Carl too, during his bucket truck pursuits, pursuits. I did send a, a request in for the streetlight outages, the ones that I did find that were out, and Friday, actually nicely, I talked to them here and they were repairing them. I believe they're all repaired, except it might be the one on E Street, I think it might have to be changed, but I believe that they've been repaired. If anybody knows any of that are out, they're free to call the village here and let us know, and I'll get the phone numbers and they get the requests out, so they can take care of them. As you mentioned, we had a water vein break on L Street on Friday afternoon, Friday evening, which is fixed, everything is back on the run. And I wanna thank you for standing out there and calling for this, lagging and.
While we're on the topic here, Mike, not to interrupt you, but I'd like for you to share some information with the board on this, on this backhoe. What happened to it?
Well, the frost is like two to three foot deep. We chiseled away trying to get, we gotta, we gotta get it fixed, the water's pouring to ground, we got ice on L Street. We dug for, I don't know, probably an hour and a half or so, and we only had a hole that was, you know, three, four foot wide and a foot or so deep, and it was hard going. As we're trying to scratch and get through the frost, we broke the main cylinder, this shaft, I've never seen one break down, but right in the center of the shaft, the shaft broke right in half, our main boom. So now we're stuck, so I did call Russell's Point, and they took care of us, came up and, and did dig it for us, they brought a machine that they had and they sent their operator with it. What we did in two hours, they came up with, with their machine, and within a half an hour, they did more than we did in two hours. It was unbelievable the difference. I, I don't believe our machine is heavy enough, strong enough for what we need here in the village, especially with the extra infrastructure we have coming. I mean, the machine is probably ten years old. This, I think it was in October, I had the cylinder fixed, and this is the first time we've actually dug with it since I got it fixed. It wasn't the same issue, it was a different issue with the cylinder, the same cylinder, and we put a bunch of money into it, then we got it fixed, and this is the first time we use it and it's broke again. Right now, I've got the cylinder taken off, I sent it, they are gonna fix it, we have to get it fixed, because hopefully we have no more, but if we get another water vein break, we're, right now we don't have a backhoe. So I think we need to look at getting, getting another backhoe upgrade, you know, see if we can sell this one and getting something a little bit heavier, a little bit bigger that'll do the job, because we're gonna have a lot of infrastructure here. This time of year, it's tough going. It's not bad in the middle of summertime, but that's not when your water breaks come.
What's the difference with the Russell's Point, I thought it was a lot.
It's a heavier machine.
Just a lot heavier machine?
Yeah. Down there, I don't remember what model it is, they've got a cat, and, I mean, we were, we were scratching with our machine and sliding the machine, it's just not, he came up, he didn't even move his machine, and he, he chiseled right through that. I couldn't believe how much difference there was, I just, it was like night and day, you know? We'd have been there for a while, we probably would've got it, I'm sure we'd have got it, but we'd have been there for some time. I just could not believe the difference in the power in that machine versus what we have as far as getting the job done. And in that, in them situations, time is money, your water's running like open, you've got three guys standing, or four guys, whatever, you know, standing there that you need to get, things they can care of. I feel that strongly that the board should look into upgrading the backhoe they have here, upgrade to something maybe a little heavier, a little newer, especially with the extra infrastructure coming. I mean, when we have a problem, we're gonna need to take care of it, can't rely on, you know? We got lucky that they were willing to come help us, but we can't always rely on a neighboring community, you know, and be able to counter, to be able to bail us out. I mean, worst case scenario, if they said, "No," we'd have to hire somebody regardless of that. Actually, I've got a book, state contracts are, but, you know, machine plus labor, we'd have to hire it out, there's no way around it, had to be fixed, things that run.
What are we looking at for expenses for this, to get this?
This one?
Or backhoe, back up and functioning?
I don't know yet, they were supposed to call me this afternoon, but I did talk to him and he didn't have, I think he had a part, but he was getting all of, listed all the parts, and he had imagined to call me tomorrow morning. I told him I wanted to call, you know, before they call in and fix it. We're gonna, we're gonna have to get it fixed, I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it. I was talking to another fella that had broke theirs, I don't know if it was, I don't think it was the same backhoe we had, and they rebuilt theirs, and he had called for parts, and the parts were like sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars. So he said, "Well, I can't get that much more, how much is the new cylinder?" Forty-seven hundred dollars or something. I don't believe how much, but, I mean, for us it's a necessity, we can't, we can't function without decent equipment. I really suggest that we look into it, at least getting bids on, seeing what is out there, seeing how much it is, upgrading to something a little bit heavier than what we have, a little bit bigger.
Mike, can you, can you get some quotes?
Yeah.
Similar to the equipment that Russell's Point has?
I can, and I'll see what's, see what maybe state contracts sign too, to see what's available. And we're gonna have to write some kind of specs, it's like the truck, you know, you can buy a, a regular work truck, or you can buy something that's, that fits your needs, basically. It's like the truck, you know, you can buy a, a regular work truck, or you can buy something that's, that fits your needs, basically.
Do you think it would be beneficial, once our piece of equipment is fixed, even if we were to get a new backhoe, would it be beneficial to the village to keep that, that one? Would we have a necessity, or would we be better off selling it?
I mean, if you can get enough for you, better off selling it. I mean, if you don't, if they don't wanna give you hardly anything for it, well, it's probably worth more to us than somebody else, but, um, we shouldn't need to.
It is ten years old, and there will be some...
There'll be some appreciation, I'm sure, but I'm sure there'll be, yeah, I suppose it depends what it is, do we have to have to? Not necessarily.
Could you have something available for us for the next meeting?
Yep.
And this part that is broken down twice on us, have you checked to see if there's been an issue with this model, um, in this part? Any, anything that is a manufacturer defect, just curiosity on that?
No, it's the cylinder, the first time, um, I believe one of the bolts loosened on the end of the cylinder, and it stripped the threads out of the cylinder when we were digging, actually Elm Street again. We were doing, uh, the culvert work over there, and we did have it fixed, they put all new seals, they brought seven of the machines out, they were gonna fix it. This is the same cylinder, but this time, I've, I've never seen that happen, but the shaft is probably a two and a half inch more on that two and four, and the shaft itself is not the average. Usually the casing will break there, I've never seen it break there.
Yeah.
And I know actually that same machine, I think Ross's Point has that same machine we have, and, uh, they ended up, it wasn't big enough, and that's why they bought this machine that they have now. They've had for, I think they've had this one for eight years, and when they brought up and used, um, I think they just used it all enough, pushing it away, because it wasn't heavy enough for what. So they kinda did the same, same scenario, kinda thing, you know, they bought it, they're gonna be what they needed, um, but it didn't end up being heavy enough for what. You know, maybe if it were a small start now, there would probably be, but as we're growing, especially this time of year, I mean, if you could, if we have a lot of water breaks in July, then there wouldn't be so much of an issue. But with this frost, you just, you can't, you need something bigger to get through it.
Well, I agree with Mike, if, if the village is going to grow and, and prosper with this water project, then you need to have the equipment that's gonna keep up with them.
Well, my concern is, as we get, uh, the increased pressure and our old pipes will just start pumping like...
That's gonna be another thing, anything that's a weak point now, that's right on the verge, will, um, probably end up, we dig it.
We'll be responsible for some of that. Some of the infrastructure will be replaced here, but some of the, the village will have to, will have to, we'll have to replace it if it's a problem.
I know we've got quite a few wean water shut offs right now, indeed, but we were waiting to this summer, till we do sidewalks, some of our sidewalks, that's, you know, do it when we have to. When we tear a sidewalk, we don't have to right now.
Just put up some of this press design, I don't need to be on the ground here, so.
You can have that for us from my house next month, that would be great.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll try to do it both on the, if you have the same contract side and the regular, just a way you can kind of see what they have for options and, you know, what you need.
I don't know for the article or John Dier, because I'm thinking it's a lot to do with the design as well.
They have a guy down there, and I can't, I just can't.
You're in a company that specializes in this type of equipment, New Holland doesn't.
In parts. You know, you can get parts.
Feels like, yeah.
Mike, will you, you'll also try to do local as much as possible?
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else here? Mike, your questions for Mike? Concerns?
Thanks for everything, Mike.
No problem, I think the crew, crew is what, uh...
Well, yeah, all of you.
I don't think they have any else, you know, we got our last little assault, we'll have plenty to get us through with the rest of the winter, and I'm sure we'll have some assault left a little bit, something having a shed killer next year. Other than that, we've been doing general repairs. We did have a, maybe a leak there in between, I mean, we'd have more than that, but where we didn't have to do the streets, you know, a little snow for a few days.
It's a little creepy.
Where we could get caught up in some oddball stuff in the garage, uh, just odd and end repairs, basically. And that's about all I got.
The correspondence, please.
Correspondence to Alvest, development regarding certification of electrical inspection. Correspondence to Kenny Bell Franch regarding the property at twenty-nine Cedar Street. Correspondence to Sheriff David Thagro asking for additional speed control in the village. Letter from ARC with two hundred and seventy-five dollar payment and blue taxes. JCEO monthly report.
Sheriff has been in the village, uh, more often as of late. And you can see how busy Julie's been next door, the number of, um, services, especially the senior services that, uh...
Yeah.
And heat. You heard us see heat, things that she's been doing is phenomenal. I think the New York State freed up some of that money. Nothing under old business, uh, under new business, Novotech proposed computer system, we have tabled that till we get some more information. I've been in conversation with, uh, with our legal source here, Attorney Marshall, and he has, uh, he has stated that we need to, we need to, uh... We need to have a motion to authorize, uh, obviously our codes officer, uh, Michael Tetro and one other person. I would like to nominate, uh, Mike Jollaker to attend the, the inspection with Mr. Tetro. We need to have, uh, another building inspection done, according to the legal papers that was presented to me from Mr. Marshall. The legal, uh, issues, uh, and then, to proceed, I know that last month, we gave a thirty-day ultimatum. According to Mr. Marshall, that is not sufficient. We need to, uh, go through the legal paperwork that you have been copied with, and, uh... He, I guess, well, what I'm really asking for is a motion to appoint Mike Jollaker to, uh, to do the inspection and to, to do the report on Spectrum Rentals LLC, uh, property at twenty-nine Cedar Street. And then we can fill in the dates and, uh, and move forward there. I apologize it's taken so long, but this is, uh, the legal bureaucracy that we have to face to deal with this issue.
Can I make a motion that we appoint Mike Jollaker to do the inspection of the property located at twenty-nine Cedar Street? To inspect with Mike Tetro?
I don't think we need to appoint Mike Tetro, he's already a codes officer, so he's already, you know, has our authorization as a, as a village.
Okay, this second motion.
Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, seeing the five are saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any dissenting? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, just a couple things. Can we talk about the backhoe? A concern has been brought up about uniform rentals. It is, uh, it is costing the village a significant amount of money in terms of uniform cost, uh, somewhere as to the two hundred and forty-eight dollars a week, which works out to about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. We have a contract that ends in November. I don't remember voting on that contract, but nonetheless, it's a five-year contract. What I'm proposing is that we continue with this contract, because the buyout will be what it's gonna cost us for the rest of the year, a so...
Actually, I, I did look into the, the contract, and it said, um, we need to pay twenty-five percent of the charges for the rest of the year. In addition, you need to pay, um, the, the replacement costs of what we already have.
So, but, do you think it would be worthwhile to just drop this? To drop your contract, pay it off, move on, or wait until November, and then the village will go out and set up a, a clothing allowance? To go out and purchase a number of uniforms, keep them here, they do their own laundry, washing, ironing, I suppose.
Your own.
I didn't think that was funny. Uh, you know, for the village, the initial purchase will be, will be a little bit on the expensive side, but it's going to be less than what we are paying for now. If, uh, if the uniforms, if they happen to be ripped or torn or whatever, and we send them back to the company, uh, they charge us for fixing them. Really what we're paying is, is the same price over and over and over again for the same clothes. And there's no difference, I mean, it's, you know, to me, it would be more cost beneficial for us to go out and buy six short sleeve summer shirts and six long sleeve winter shirts, and six pairs of pants for both summer and winter, and, um... You know, if, if the board so desires, maybe even a jacket for the winter time. We already supply the boots once a year. I think, from a class standpoint, I think we would be better off to go ourselves.
You will be, because I did a little research this afternoon after we talked, and you can get, um, workwear in bulk, Carhartt, good quality for, I did a little bit of the math, it's gonna be less expensive. And you don't replace them every single year, you don't say those eight pairs of jeans are no good after one year, so you're not constantly replacing them.
Another one is Red Cat, they supplied.
That was another one that came up on the same website.
I bought their clothing for myself, very good quality.
Yep, I saw that one too.
Will we do some kind of screen printing, so that the, the summer t-shirts, you know, like now have Village of Champlain on it, so we'll, we'll do some kind of...
I think they should be embroidered, we can do that locally.
Right, like, more, more ones or... But just, just so that...
Oh, yeah.
Very inexpensive. When they show up at somebody's door for something to read, need or whatever, that, you know...
You should bring up your other ideas.
Yeah. Our little son's right over there.
Although, no, Kim, you're, you're leading into his next idea.
You're in.
I knew. Exactly, there you go.
It's, it's been a concern, uh, I, I really think that we need to set up an ID card system for our employees. I was told, Woody, uh, told me today that Eric Day, who was the emergency coordinator for Clinton County, uh, has this, uh, has this ability to, to get us some ID cards laminated, uh, you know, for our employees. Am I correct in that assumption, Woody?
Yeah, he has access to a machine that will do that for us. Uh, it's somewhat with, uh, somebody in Reese's has it, and they give it to municipalities, or loan it.
So it's, it's like an emergency services thing?
Yeah. Eric's out of town, we have to call Kelly this week.
I saw Kelly Saturday night, so we'll call him. Um, but I think it would be best if we had the ID cards, when our employees read the meters or go around the village and knock on doors for a problem, or...
That's an excellent idea.
Whatever, that they can identify themselves as a village employee and, uh, you know, put their ugly mug on a picture or something, you know? I mean, to me, it would just be, it would just be more beneficial, and I think safer from the standpoint of the residents, to know that that person knocked on your door. I would imagine that some folks are reluctant to answer the door if they look out, see somebody standing there, you know, without an ID card.
Of course, if you have a card, you're ready to shut your water off, sometimes you don't want to.
That's the choice that they have to make.
Don't show them the rest? Hope I tried a door, and started going.
No, I think, I think that's a great idea, Greg.
My final, uh, article of business, under new business, is, uh, I received a call from the town fathers today, town supervisor. We're involved in this water project, and I, I think we're all behind, I know we're all behind the water project. It's, I can see nothing but extreme benefit for the village, water softening, increased pressure, uh, better infrastructure, uh, you know, I, I look at our share at twenty-five percent. The town is seventy-five percent, but I look at our share, and it's, by my figures and what I'm looking at, I, I think we can more than benefit, and it's not going to be so cost prohibitive that it's gonna throw the taxpayers, the village residents, uh, out of whack, so to speak. This water project, I think, is, is important. I hope that, uh, you know, when, soon we find out that we've been awarded a grant, we can move forward with the engineering and the planning and the property and all of this stuff that has to go through this. And, and get it done and online by the end of, uh, two thousand fifteen, right? That's the assumption. My conversation with the town, uh... Today was a discussion of the wastewater part of this project. Water is about eleven million, wastewater is about six, uh, or less. We haven't talked percentages yet, how this is going to be broken down, but I'm looking at the village's needs, and ours is, is significantly less than what the town is looking for, or looking at, so to speak. Because we don't need that much of a change in our sewer system. Most of the change is going to come from accepting wastewater from the, from the new town districts and the new end users. We already handle a number of commercial accounts, I think it's up to around sixty, somewhere as in that area. We have some residential, probably, uh, along Ridge Road, there's probably what, twenty-five or thirty? And then we handle the municipal, uh, the, the commercial accounts, like McDonald's and Maple Fields and, uh, Border View, uh, you know, those stores and things like that. So what we're looking at really is the addition on the east west service road, which is all commercial, and there will be some residential additions as the lines extend to South Street. And then as the last phase of this, uh, water wastewater project is along Route eleven. So we're talking, you know, a, a couple of years here before that line extends down that avenue, and we can't be guaranteed, and this is, I guess this is my biggest concern, is that we can't be guaranteed the number of new users here. One of the concessions that the town is requesting from the village is that we reduce, is that we reduce the rates that we are charging the town to handle their wastewater. And it is a significant reduction. Looking at the numbers and discussing it today, uh, I don't think that this is, this is something that the village really should consider at this point. I think the, what the town is looking for and what the engineers are looking for to make this project go forward, I think is, at this point, is too extravagant for the village's residents. We have one more payment on that plant, we have paid for it for the last thirty years or whatever, we have one more payment and it's ours. We have sustained the infrastructure, we have sustained the plant, we have sustained the whole workings of this plant. But, you know, I, I, I can see, part of me can see a, a minor concession, not what the town is asking. Uh, right now, the rate is sixteen sixty per thousand, they would like to have that reduced to six. Looking at what we charge our residents in the village, that is six dollars per thousand. Plus the service fee. Now, the town is gonna add a service fee to this anyway, but be that as it may. In the discussion today, we looked over the whole sheet of what, uh, the water sewer rates are, and even our commercial customers here in the village. Those along the mall, uh, Stephanie Brown's business up here on Main Street, uh, we are charging them nine dollars and twelve cents per thousand. Plus a minimum payment of sixty-three dollars per quarter. So really what we're looking at is, is the request is to reduce, to reduce the water rates to below what we are charging our commercial customers at the moment. Wastewater, yes. Wastewater, not the water, but the wastewater. Uh, and in fact... And in fact...
It's lower than the villagers because we pay a service fee plus a $6.
Yes, and the town also attaches a service charge to that. But I mean, and even this, if we were to reduce the town districts wastewater cost, the wastewater rates to the $6 per thousand, that would be $1.46 less than what we charged them for water. And without the water, you have the wastewater. That's how we base our charges for wastewater is based on the water usage.
How could we charge them enough for wastewater? It costs more to process.
Well, that is the thinking from the engineering crew, that for this project to move forward, the cost has to be reduced for the anticipated users. We have no accurate estimate of the estimated number of estimated users. I talked to Mr. Cooper this afternoon about this and I said I talked to a couple of my trustees and they were, to put it bluntly, they were very, they felt that this was a very inadequate request from the town. I will meet with Mr. Cooper if one of you, if one of you is available tomorrow afternoon at 5:30. Mr. Cooper will meet and discuss this issue here in the village office. I'd be more than happy to go out alone with him. I would like to have one trustee so that it doesn't become a...
He said she said.
Well, not only he said she said, but it, you know, it doesn't become, but it's such a short notice, a public meeting. I mean, the public is more than welcome to attend, you know?
We unfortunately have an appointment tomorrow evening.
I think I'll be back tomorrow.
Well, I think it would be beneficial.
Tomorrow night's the only night. I see it's raining tomorrow, there's no way I'll be up before nine.
He's going to attend the town board meeting at seven o'clock tomorrow evening and this is the main topic of discussion.
What is, can I ask, what the engineers...
You can ask whatever you want.
What the engineers' reasoning for such a reduction? How that benefits the other?
Because the anticipated first-year user cost would be so high that it would be detrimental. I mean, these folks are going to have to sign on anyway. Once the sewer line or the water lines or both goes by their facility, they're at least going to be charged a service fee, whether they join in or join, not decide not to join. But it's the anticipated first-year user cost that with the funding, and so far we've received $415,000 grant funding for the wastewater fund. Obviously, the more funding we get, the less that this anticipated first year will be. But at this point, it's at a level now where it is more acceptable, and correct me if I'm wrong here, it is more acceptable to the granting agencies. If you get it too high, you don't get the grants. If you get it too low, you don't get the grants.
Can we afford a slight reduction? Try to use that?
I guess that depends on what you mean a slight reduction.
I don't know, I guess I'd have to look into this a little more in depth, what does it cost us to process, et cetera?
If we reduce this to the, the last figure they have here is an $8 level, which is, by my feelings, is still unacceptable. You look, we had a first-year user cost of $910, which is $110 more than the $6 per thousand rate. So, you can do the figuring as you go up through with eight, ten, twelve, you know, and...
I thought I had ten in mind, but I hate this grasp number because they seem reasonable.
Why is this coming through now at this stage in the game? Why is this request coming through now?
Because the water, the water figures have pretty much been stabilized with the grant thing. And now the engineering firm is looking at the wastewater, thinking that was always a secondary consideration. Water first. Getting the funding, getting the planning and organization done there. And I think one of the reasons that this has kind of moved ahead a little bit is because of the $415,000 grant that is going to push them a little bit quicker towards planning and implementation.
Is there a deadline that this has to be ever upon?
No, no. Not that I know of. No deadline that I know of. But that's the request. I thought I would pass that on to your consideration. I think we all look at that $6 rate as something that is unacceptable.
That's a lot acceptable.
Yeah, I know, that's unacceptable, but...
I mean, how do we sell it to our villagers? You know, that for these add-ons that may come or may not come, we're going to take a huge hit.
Well, not only that, but, you know, hey, guys, we put this in, you've paid for it, you've paid long and hard, you've lived, you know, as most of us have been residents all our lives, you've paid for this and now you're going to let outside users come in and...
It's the same for us.
Or less. I can't see that flying with our village residents.
Well, it's not only the residential users, but it's also the commercial users that we have. If we, I think the point was made this afternoon, what do you think? If we reduce the rate to the town districts, then we also have to look very seriously at our commercial rates in the village.
Right, and if we reduce everybody across the board, what kind of hit is that going to be? It's going to be a lot of numbers for you to crunch to give us that.
Well, looking at those numbers and those reductions, I don't think that we would be viable in servicing the wastewater.
And these new users are getting a benefit that they would have had the expense of drilling wells and septic systems and maintaining those all on their own.
Yes, as well as the water softening system.
So, it really is, you know, it is going to be an added burden on the new users, no question about it. But in the long run, just like it was for us, it's going to be a benefit for them and not the expense nor the maintenance or any of that. And this is if we get new users.
Right.
Well, if the numbers are high enough to be sustainable. You're looking at the West Service Road, there's probably guessing 50 EDUs.
Oh, no, there's more than EDUs, it's more than that on the West Service Road.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how many. I think Smith alone has about that, Eric and Deligarre, not Deligarre, but Eric.
Smith would have three.
Three EDU?
The shop, the restaurant, and the offices.
Yeah, but it goes by, I thought it was like each bathroom, each fixture was the EDU. That's how they counted it, huh?
Well, they put some of that as a guess too.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the shop, the restaurant, the little offices you've got there in the back.
Yeah, that's five for six.
I mean, I have to look at the chart there. He would have a lot of miles down there to the Ucal. You know, for the whole road, you could go by that, but...
I don't know, Greg, I would suggest if you try to do a reduction to help split that balance, because nobody would go to that amount. And then maybe, once we know the numbers, once we know the amount of actual users, we can revisit it. We don't know that right now. It's just, you have no idea. The light going by, we won't, we're not going to tap into it.
You don't have any EDU? System design flow study area, base time effective users, average daily demand of 150 gallons per day and a maximum daily demand of 300 gallons per day. The following table shows the average and maximum data flows for the alternative described above. Phase one, estimated 208 EDUs, which would be 27, 7, 5, 0 gallons. And then the maximum, 55,000 gallons. Phase two, 129 and a half EDUs, so the total of 329. Add it to, I think, what is the town's EDU now?
I don't know, it's up and away.
I think it's probably 90, 90.
Yeah, it sounds about right, yeah.
So, you're adding 329, 330 to 100 existing. You're talking less than, less than the number of EDUs that are currently in the village. Still less than. And that's a guess. That's an estimate of the, you know, the new users.
That's what I mean, once we know that a disclaimer exists, you can probably calculate what a needed charge should be.
Well, he's, in past discussions, he's done some number crunching with this. And if they achieve the number of anticipated EDUs, the engineering firm feels that we would be in the area of about $36,000 ahead.
Based on current rates, you mean?
Based on the $6 rate.
Based on $6.
Based on all the new users they say are going to come on board.
If the anticipated users, if that number is...
And this does not calculate into the fact that just the basic discrimination of lowering these new people to six while we've got all these businesses that have been paying into it and paying big bucks in their budgets. We have to equitably share a cut across the board. And it's not just as simple as just these new users.
Right.
And we could not possibly justify that.
I will pass on your dissatisfaction with this. If you can't, but that's okay.
Can I bring up one more thing?
You certainly can.
No.
This is just one for you all to think about, all right?
Sleep on it, you?
Yeah, for a while. And don't think about any money right now, okay? We, a few of us have discussed redesigning this space, this space, to make this a more attractive, friendly, nice office area. This whole space, including, I don't know if this is going to work very well or not, but...
We require demolition of this building, honey.
No, I just think, just, I told you, don't give me anything, just think about it. How we can make those office for the women nicer and maybe the mayor could have a better space and Mike could have a better space. I think we could redesign this better. It seems like it's time.
One of the things that we can accomplish very quickly with minimal cost that you suggested is in this room. Take out these, put a line of tables here.
Yeah, my idea was to somehow put it this way or this way and put the chairs in front so this gigantic table unit doesn't take up all this room. And then when you're seated in that audience, you're really close to those people.
You've got all this wasted space right here.
Right, right. So, yeah, my first recommendation would be make this behind us and we go over here and then eventually maybe we can get a screen here so that people might even use technology in here and have, okay, I said just think about it.
You're willing to get out of the box now.
I waited till the end of the meeting to bring this up, okay?
We're talking about a massive backhoe right now.
I think this building is in major need of a facelift and...
Even a closed gate.
When you're, when, let's face it, we spend a lot of time at our jobs and a lot of time in our workspace, probably more time than we spend at home. And it does make going to work nicer when you have a nice workspace. It really does. And with a major business in Rouse's Point closing, there's always opportunities at some point when they might be getting rid of things to possibly contact them and see if there's things that they might be willing to donate. Also, lines of technical equipment that they might be willing to donate or purchase at a small price. What's the worst that anybody can say is no, but if you don't ask the questions, you'll never know the answer.
That is so. Yeah, that's fair. Okay, so it's just kind of out there, just think, go home and draw little pictures of how you'd like the space redesigned.
Well, this would be simple to achieve, change this right over. I can see us sitting on this side, straight line of tables with the audience here and, you know, I think that would be a good change.
Makes it difficult for us to talk with each other.
Well, we don't have to be in a room. We could be, we could have it somehow either curved one way or the other.
Technology could come into play in here, we could put a microphone in front of us.
And we could stay at home and I'll just Skype it in.
There you go.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Is that your motion?
It is my motion.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.